Good evening. I call this meeting to order.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Ms. Thomas, roll call, please.
Dr. Bellamy.
Present.
Ms. Hill.
Here.
Ms. Walker.
Present.
Mr. Signer.
Here.
Ms. Galvin.
Here.
All right, any announcements?
I have an announcement. The City of Charlottesville Boards and Commissions' application process is open for appointments to be considered at the November 18th, 2019 City Council meeting. Information regarding vacancies is available on the city website under Departments and Services, Boards and Commissions. Applications will be accepted through November 8th unless otherwise noted.
Thank you.
Is there information written anywhere for the public?
I have an announcement.
It's on the city's website, yes ma'am.
Okay, on the city's website, we can find that information.
Yeah, under Departments and Services, Boards and Commissions.
I have an announcement, Mayor Walker. Good evening, everybody. We should have a fun meeting tonight. This message is from, excuse me, this announcement is from Ms. Charlene Green on behalf of the NAACP. At 1:00 PM this Wednesday, there will be a brief unveiling of the latest historic marker addressing school desegregation to be placed near the school's interest on Cherry Avenue. And this will be taking place at Beaufort. Afterwards, a ceremony will begin at 1:30 PM in the school auditorium honoring the Trailblazers who were part of the school's desegregation. This effort was led in part by then-NACP President Eugene Williams and his wife Lorraine, who at that time, rather, was a teacher in the city schools. You must park at the Cherry Avenue Baptist Church and a jaunt shuttle will take you to Johnson. 1:00 PM, and again, this will take place 1:00 PM in front of Johnson Elementary this Wednesday, October 23rd. Forgive me, I said Beaufort, I meant to say Johnson Elementary. So again, this Wednesday, 1:00 PM, there will be a historic marker unveiling. The ceremony will begin at 1:30, and this is to commemorate the desegregations of our schools jointly led by Mr. Eugene Williams and his wife Lorraine. Hope to see you there. Don't forget, park at the Cherry Avenue Baptist Church and the shuttle will take you over.
All right. Mayor Walker, I have a few announcements. Okay, so, this is an RFP, a Request for Proposal Notice for 2020-2021 CDBG and HOMERFP. The City of Charlottesville will be accepting proposals for 2020 CDBG, that's Community Development Block Grants, and HOMFunding beginning October 25, 2019, and ending at 4:00 PM on December 3, 2019. Projects will support a viable urban community through the provision of decent housing, a suitable living environment, and economic opportunity for low and moderate income citizens. Beginning October 25, 2019, the RFP and related documents can be found on the city's website at www charlottesville.org/cdbghomerfp. All one word, all caps. Online submission is required. There is a mandatory technical assistance session with this. The city will require all applicants to schedule and attend a 30-minute mandatory technical assistance session with the grants coordinator. The meeting must be held between October 25, 2019, and November 29, 2019, and prior to this proposal submissions. To schedule a technical assistance session or for questions concerning the RFP, contact Erin Atacke, Grants Coordinator, at atacke@charlottesville.org. That's A-T-A-K-E at charlottesville.org, or call 434-970-3093.
Can you repeat that number again?
It's 434-970-3093.
And is this information as well?
Excuse me, can you?
Sorry. Not all of us can write as quickly as this does.
Okay, but it's recorded. Thank you. So, I'm sorry, one point I failed to mention, Dr. Richardson is at a conference this week, and our deputy city manager, COO, Ms. Letitia Shelton, is here today. And so, for those of you who haven't been introduced, I just forgot to do that at the beginning of the meeting, so, welcome.
Sorry, Mayor Walker. I'm good.
One little, teeny one. It was in the newspaper, but through a partnership with the Ravanna Solid Waste Authority, and this is the Virginia Oyster Shell Recycling and Restoration Program, we've created an opportunity to have a bin at the McIntyre Recycling so that restaurants can actually, you know, put their oysters in for recycling. And the beauty of that is that they then create beds for the seeding of new baby oysters. And they're critically important to cleanse the Chesapeake Bay. It's very important that we do that, and it's wonderful partnership that this came up, and there's space, and a lot of area restaurants are using that facility. And I know people love oysters around here, so, just want to let you know, the ribbon cutting for this new aspect of the McIntyre Recycling Center is Wednesday, October 23, at 11:00 AM at the McIntyre Recycling Center on McIntyre Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements?
Sorry, Mayor Walker, I have one more. I apologize. This comes from our friends at Semper Edes, as well as our Latino and Latinx community, Seville Sabroso. There's going to be a Latin Music and Folk Festival taking place at the ICS Art Park on Saturday, November 2nd, from 7:00 PM to midnight, celebrating Dia de los Milletos. And it's a beautiful Mexican celebration where we celebrate the lives of our ancestors and loved ones who have passed on with music, dance, art, and food. Hundreds of people come out each year to celebrate with us and remember their loved ones together, and the event is open to the entire public. So if you want to go out and have some fun with the DJ, some great food, musicians, live music, and so forth, go on out to the ICS Art Park, November 2nd, Saturday, November 2nd, from 7:00 PM to midnight, and that's being hosted by Seville Sabroso and Semper Edes.
All right, thank you.
That's it.
Any other announcements? All right. Next, we're moving on to the consent agenda. Is there anyone who would like to make comments on an item on the consent agenda? Ms. Thomas, could you read the consent agenda, please?
Consent Agenda 1A, September 9th, City-City Joint Meeting. September 12th, Budget Work Session. B, Appropriation, Parks and Recreation Gift Guide Memorials Account, $3,260, first of two readings. C, Appropriation, State Criminal Alien Assistance Program, $14,230, first of two readings. D, Resolution, Accepting Streets Within the Sunrise Park Planned Unit Development into the city's street system, one reading. E, Resolution, Piedmont District Baptist Association Off-Cycle Funding Request, SAT Preparation Course, $2,000, one reading. F, Resolution, Initiation of Zoning Ordinance Amendments, Strategic Investment Area Form-Based Code, one reading. G, Resolution, Ravanna Water and Sewer Authorities Observatory Water Treatment Plant, Raw Water Pumping and Piping Upgrade Cost and Capacity Allocation Agreement, one reading. H, Ordinance, Ordinance Repealing Chapter 31, Section 31-103, Buck Mountain Surcharge for Water Connections, first of two readings. I, Ordinance, PEG Bandwidth Virginia LLC Telecommunications Franchise, second reading. J, Ordinance, Release of Portion of Sewer Easement, McIntyre Plaza, second reading. K, Report, Ravanna Authorities Quarterly Update, written only.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on an item on the consent agenda after hearing it read? All right. Counsel, I just asked that we pull E and F to vote on separately.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
So I move that we adopt the consent agenda, less items E and F for separate vote.
Are there any further questions or comments? All right, please vote.
Second.
Oh, second.
That's important. Please vote. All right. Is there a motion?
We're into a motion, no questions.
Are there any questions from anyone else on either?
So, we're going to vote separately on them?
Mm-hmm.
So I move that we adopt items E and F on the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, please vote. All right, that carries four to one. All right, next, we have City Manager Response to Community Matters from the October 7th meeting.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council and Public. There were three items from the last council meeting that the city manager is responding to. The first one, in response to why can't family members be notified to take care of the children of mothers or fathers who are temporarily detained by our legal system, we're having Human Services review the feasibility of this recommendation by the citizen at the last meeting. In response to moving the John West Placard currently located at 10th Northwest Street and West Main Street to Hardy Drive, staff is researching the property where the placard is currently residing to determine if it's private property. And then, the third one, the request for audio signal at Preston and Rose Hill, that too is being evaluated by the staff, and the findings will be presented to the city manager by the end of next week.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have the Community Matters, Public Comment, and first up, we have Jeff Fogel.
Good evening. My name is Jeffrey Fogel. I live in Belmont here in the city, and I'm going to cede my time to Richard Coons.
Good evening, Counsel.
Good evening.
Good evening. I had some notes that I was going to speak on, but I'm going to save them for a later date. So I'm here on behalf of the CRB, and for people who have lived the life that I have lived, on the other side of the law, doing things is not right. However, what I know to be true and factual is that, growing up in the 10th and Page Street area neighborhoods, I was harassed, disrespected, stripped, searched, patted down, taken behind bills, and had my clothes taken off to see if I had drugs. At that particular time, at 15, 16 years old, I did not know that that stuff was not legal. So the purpose for having something as a CRB board today is a simple question. When I'm walking through Hardy Drive, an officer may come to me and say, "Hey, what are you doing here?" Right? That question in itself is illegal, right? But I wouldn't know that. And then, who would I complain to? Who would have my back if I go tell somebody, "Hey, the officer just asked me, what am I doing here?" Because I can guarantee you, my friends that I went to school with at CHS that lived in and around CHS area, they never had to go through that. They walked wherever they wanted, did whatever they wanted to do. They never had no police interaction where they was being patted down, stripped, searched, and things of that nature. So, if we can't have a CRB, if we can't have an auditorium, I just don't see where people like me would have any recourse. I don't see people like me having someone to have their back for people who don't have a voice. All right? So, as I think about a lot of situations, and then I come back to just these low-income areas in Charlottesville, there's hundreds of people like me. I know this. I have conversations with these dudes, women's, right? I have conversations with them, but when we look out again, they don't come here because they feel that whatever they have to say, they won't be heard. What they have to say is not essential to the changing of the guard, so to speak, in Charlottesville. And I would hope that City Council finds something where the police don't police themselves. The history of this town has proven, if we listen to the people, that the police have done things that are illegal, but there is no recourse. So what do we do? If we continue to go the route that we've been going, we're going to always get what we've always gotten, period. There's no way around that. So, I always like to talk about soda zones, stay out of designated drug zones. They don't exist in word, but they exist in mindset. So I'm just hoping that we can get an auditorium for the CRB board. Thank you.
Thank you. Katrina Turner?
Katrina Turner. On June 4th, 2018, City Council chose a group of citizens to form a CRB Civilian Review Board because of the actions that took place on August 12, 2017. From the beginning, we had some pushback from City Council when they did not choose two of the people
11:00 AM at the McIntyre Recycling Center on McIntyre Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements?
Sorry, Mayor Walker. I have one more. I apologize. This comes from our friends at Sin Berres as well as our Latino and Latinx community, Seville Sabaroso. There's going to be a Latin music and folk festival taking place at the Ix Art Park on Saturday, November 2nd, from 7:00 PM to midnight, celebrating Dia de los Milotos. And it's a beautiful Mexican celebration where we celebrate the lives of our ancestors and loved ones who have passed on with music, dance, art, and food. Hundreds of people come out each year to celebrate with us and remember their loved ones together. And the event is open to the entire public. So if you want to go out and have some fun with the DJ, some great food, musicians, live music and so forth, go on out to the Ix Art Park, November 2nd, Saturday, November 2nd, from 7:00 PM to midnight. And that's being hosted by Seville Sabaroso and Sin Berres.
All right. Thank you.
That's it.
Any other announcements? All right. Next, we're moving on to the consent agenda. Is there anyone who would like to make comments on an item on the consent agenda? Ms. Thomas, could you read the consent agenda, please?
Consent Agenda 1A, September 9th, City-County Joint Meeting. September 12th, Budget Work Session. B, Appropriation, Parks and Recreation Gift Guide Memorials Account, $3,260, first of two readings. C, Appropriation, State Criminal Alien Assistance Program, $14,230, first of two readings. D, Resolution, Accepting Streets Within the Sunrise Park Planned Unit Development Into the City's Street System, one reading. E, Resolution, Piedmont District Baptist Association Off-Cycle Funding Request, SAT Preparation Course, $2,000, one reading. F, Resolution, Initiation of Zoning Ordinance Amendments, Strategic Investment Area Form-Based Code, one reading. G, Resolution, Ravanna Water and Sewer Authorities Observatory Water Treatment Plant, Raw Water Pumping and Piping Upgrade Cost and Capacity Allocation Agreement, one reading. H, Ordinance, Ordinance Repealing Chapter 31, Section 31-103, Buck Mountain Surcharge for Water Connections, first of two readings. I, Ordinance, Peg Bandwidth Virginia LLC Telecommunications Franchise, second reading. J, Ordinance, Release of Portion of Sewer Easement, McIntyre Plaza, second reading. K, Report, Ravanna Authorities Quarterly Update, written only.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on an item on the consent agenda after hearing it read? All right. Counsel, I just ask that we pull E and F to vote on separately.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
So I move that we adopt the consent agenda, less items E and F for separate vote.
Are there any further questions or comments? All right. Please vote.
Second.
Oh, second.
That's important. Please vote. Is there a motion?
We're into a motion, no questions.
Are there any questions from anyone else on either? All right.
So we're going to vote separately on them?
Mm-hmm.
So I move that we adopt items E and F on the consent agenda.
Second.
All right. Please vote. All right. That carries four to one. All right. Next, we have City Manager Response to Community Matters from the October 7th meeting.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council and Public. There were three items from the last council meeting that the city manager is responding to. The first one, in response to why can't family members be notified to take care of the children of mothers or fathers who are temporarily detained by our legal system, we're having Human Services review the feasibility of this recommendation by the citizen at the last meeting. In response to moving the John West Placard currently located at 10th Northwest Street and West Main Street to Hardy Drive, staff is researching the property where the placard is currently residing to determine if it's private property. And then the third one, the request for audio signal at Preston and Rose Hill, that too is being evaluated by the staff and the findings will be presented to the city manager by the end of next week.
All right. Thank you. Next up, we have the Community Matters, Public Comment. And first up, we have Jeff Fogel.
Good evening. My name is Jeffrey Fogel. I live in Belmont here in the city. And I'm going to cede my time to Richard Coons.
Good evening, Counsel.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Evening.
I had some notes that I was going to speak on, but I'm going to save them for a later date. So I'm here on behalf of the CRB. And for people who have lived the life that I have lived, on the other side of the law, doing things is not right. However, what I know to be true and factual is that growing up in the 10th and Page Street area neighborhoods, I was harassed, disrespected, stripped, searched, patted down, taken behind bills and had my clothes taken off to see if I had drugs. At that particular time, at 15, 16 years old, I did not know that that stuff was not legal. So the purpose for having something as a CRB board today is a simple question. When I'm walking through Hardy Drive, an officer may come to me and say, hey, what are you doing here? Right? That question in itself is illegal, right? But I wouldn't know that. And then who would I complain to? Who would have my back if I go tell somebody, hey, the officer just asked me, what am I doing here? Because I can guarantee you, my friends that I went to school with at CHS that lived in and around CHS area, they never had to go through that. They walked wherever they wanted, did whatever they wanted to do. They never had no police interaction where they was being patted down, stripped, searched, and things of that nature. So if we can't have a CRB, if we can't have an auditor, I just don't see where people like me would have any recourse. I don't see people like me having someone to have their back for people who don't have a voice. Right? So as I think about a lot of situations, and then I come back to just these low-income areas in Charlottesville, there's hundreds of people like me. I notice. I have conversations with these dudes, women's, right? I have conversations with them. But when we look out again, they don't come here because they feel that whatever they have to say, they won't be heard. What they have to say is not essential to the changing of the guard, so to speak, in Charlottesville. And I would hope that city council finds something where the police don't police themselves. The history of this town has proven, if we listen to the people, that the police have done things that are illegal. But there is no recourse. So what do we do? If we continue to go the route that we've been going, we're going to always get what we've always gotten, period. There's no way around that. So I always like to talk about soda zones, stay out of designated drug zones. They don't exist in word, but they exist in mindset. So I'm just hoping that we can get an auditor for the CRB board. Thank you.
Thank you. Katrina Turner?
Katrina Turner. On June 4th, 2018, city council chose a group of citizens to form a CRB civilian review board because of the actions that took place on August 12th, 2017. From the beginning, we had some pushback from city council when they did not choose two of the people that the citizens of Charlottesville thought would be good for the CRB. After backlash about the two people that were denied a spot, Ms. Rosia Parker was then given a spot and Mr. Jeff Fogel was still denied a spot on the board. The board started off with eight members and within six months, two of the members resigned. For the next seven months, the remaining six members of the board worked countless hours doing research and even holding an eight-hour meeting with NACO, National Association for Civilian Oversight of Law Enforcement, to make sure we had a good understanding of how a CRB works. Members faced countless attacks on them, like being threatened with legal actions, being accused of saying things that were not said, being called tokens, being disrespected when the chief of police walked out of a meeting with two CRB members, being accused of being the reason the police were quitting the police department. I could go on and on. The bylaws that council has presented feels like a slap in the face to the people who worked their asses to the bone to write these bylaws that will hold police accountable for their actions when they do wrong. Do you care about what happens to the citizens of Charlottesville? We are only asking for accountability and transparency from the police department. We ask that you don't water the bylaws, water down the bylaws to where we might as well not have a CRB. We ask that you do not water the bylaws and ordinance down. We ask that you put the auditor's position back into the bylaws now and not wait until December 2020. We ask it to be, we ask it to fully include funding for the upcoming CRB. I would also like to ask counsel what happened to the funds that were left over from the initial CRB. Ms. Gloria Beard has asked that the money left over be divided and given to the board members. Have you considered that? The reason people do not file complaints when something happens is because they know nothing is going to happen to the officer. There are complaints out there. People just don't feel safe coming forward about them. I know everybody on city council knows there's a problem with our police department. And there's too many people coming forward now, letting y'all know that there's a problem in this department. Alls we need is justice for everybody. We just need this department to get an investigation other than their own people doing it.
George Worthington? George Worthington? I'm Kim Rowland.
Hi, my name is Kim Rowland. I'm an attorney with Legal Aid Justice Center at 1,000 Preston Avenue. And I'm going to share my time with Tanya Jackson.
My name is Tanya Jackson. I am a resident of Charlottesville. And I have been a resident here for probably about 15 years. This is my daughter, Ayana Mallory. I am nervous. I'm sorry. I am nervous, but I do want to share my experience. I am a single mother. I've raised three children. My two girls here, one, Ayana, 24 years old, no criminal record, went to a local bar slash club, witnessed an attack on a downtown mall. She witnessed a person gets stabbed, well, she witnessed the aftermath of a person getting stabbed six times in their back. Her first reaction was to go to a person who I raised her to think that they were protecting and serving, which was a CPD officer. We have video. As a mother, it hurt me to see my child getting choked by a police officer, her hands around her neck. When she came home, as an answer, I couldn't give her one. And I still can. And I am emotional behind that because we all have children. And when you want to see your child do good in this community, and then she turns to the police for help, for someone else, it's a feeling that I can never explain. And it hurts. But as a mother, I wanted to stand up and show her that I'm strong. And I'm going to be strong for her. With that being said, I helped her because she didn't believe that anything would happen. So I helped her file a complaint. Once we walked in to file the complaint, she became stronger than me. She realized that this process doesn't seem right. When we walked in, we didn't get help. We watched people eat their dinner as we sat there. They didn't know who to call for us to even speak to on the complaint. Is that correct? She had to ask the officer, which his name was Pleasance at that time, do you want to take my name? They had no, I mean, he was going to let us leave out without even feeling as if she was a person, an identity for the complaint that she wanted to file. I watched all that, and it do hurt. And I wouldn't want to see anyone, anyone go through that. So whatever this board that's supposed to be coming through, I do feel like it would help people like us. Since this has been happening, I've been hearing more stories. Honestly, my phone have videos coming to me. I'm just a person, a single mom. But people reaching out to me because they feel like I'm strong for my child, now they want to tell me their story. I do know that, you know, Ayana was, she's an adult. So, you know, as a parent, I had to go in and just be her strength, but also teach her that you have rights. So with that being said, with that being said, I can honestly admit that my first encounter with another police officer, which was called personally on our phones, both of our phones, they wanted us to come in and just feel comfortable telling her story. She became emotional and tears and anger. She felt like, and she used the word, she felt like she was being interrogated, asked for the whole interview or whatever it was at that time, which felt like interrogation, to be stopped. She was asked questions that didn't have anything to do with the actual complaint. She was asking questions about her brother who has been incarcerated for the last 10 years. So I just feel that whatever Charlottesville is trying to do, there is residents out there like myself and like my 24-year-old daughter who do not have a criminal background. I emphasize on that because sometimes people think just because you've been in trouble before, like you don't, your story doesn't matter. But for a person who's never been in trouble before, I want her to be heard. I want her story to matter. So, you know, I'm just here just telling my story. And I thank you guys for your time. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. To keep in the theme of things, I did get a chance to get a meeting with the chief of police. But it didn't turn out too pleasant. It turned into an interrogation on her part. Every time I tried to speak, it was met with arrogance. And she kept on raising her voice and raising her voice the entire time. Oh, somebody needs this room. We need to get out of here. The meeting was never completed. Mr. Richardson sat there during the meeting. When we got up from the meeting, he apologized because he didn't feel I was treated right. During that meeting, she told her sergeant to take me to the police station so I could file a formal complaint against two officers. Yes, I was taken over there. I was handed a complaint form. Here, go fill it out. Bring it back. This was after the chief of police said that they would take a sworn statement from me and fill it out in the police station. Here's a paper. Fill it out. Bring it back. Do it yourself. Again, I go into Mr. Richardson's office and I speak with him. He's again apologizing. Nothing's done. Nothing at all. I go back two weeks later, ask, well, what's being done about it? Nothing. I would like to continue this talk with the chief of police. Well, we didn't think after the meeting that you would be willing to speak with, oh, no, I want to finish this conversation. The chief of police has done everything in her power to avoid me. Two weeks ago, during the city council meeting, she made it a point to walk in the back aisle and say hello to everybody, calling them out by name, walked right past me. She knows my name. But yet, do you think she said hello, kiss my whatever or anything? No, she walked right on past me, but made it a point to say hello to everybody that was around me because her ego will not allow her to do the right thing. She needs to learn who she works for. I've stood up here and I've said it before. She works for the people. And you guys need to put her in check. And that's what this board that is being set up needs to put the police in check. And the board needs to put all of them in check. They need to understand that the people are the ones who need to take control over everything.
Hi, good evening. Abby Guskin, Charlottesville. I share my time with Don Gatheres. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I too want to rise in support of a fully funded CRB. Before I do, though, I want to make reference to a vote that was taken at last month's, I'm sorry, at the last meeting where an S U P was pushed forward. A representative of the city was allowed to speak on behalf of the developer. A representative of the developer was allowed to speak on behalf, yet there was no input allowed from the city, I'm sorry, from the citizens. The process is slanted and is flawed. If you're going to allow developers to speak that night of a vote, then the citizens should have that same opportunity. In regards to the CRB, in his letter from the Birmingham jail, Dr. King said oppressed people cannot remain oppressed forever. The urge for freedom will come. The mandate for the CRB was the urge for freedom from the citizens. They were given a directive to write bylaws, and they've done that. I urge you, before you throw another dime at a developer or builder, that you find the money to fully fund those two spots that they request. Please do not dismantle or destroy the work that they've put in. Let the bylaws stand as they are. They have been reviewed legally and they are fit. So I request that you do indeed uphold the work of the CRB. They did what they were asked to do. So often, council will go in a different direction after a board is impaneled or a board is impaneled and not accept the recommendations that they bring forth. I beg of you to not do that in this particular instance. Thank you.
Harold Foley? Harold Foley, is this not working? Oh, okay. No, I wasn't seeing it. Did you, somebody up there said they couldn't hear?
So I want to say that we, the People's Coalition, want city council to fully fund the CRB. And we really wanted a public hearing. But with that said, I'm going to cede my time to Ms. Beard.
Good afternoon. I'm Gloria Beard. Y'all know me, except Ms. Shelton may not know me. But I'm here because when I heard that things would be changed with the CRB, the one that we actually, we put our whole self into this. We studied. We called people from different communities, you know, like North Kalanis, Fairfax. So we really did. And then they brought in NACO. And nobody came because everybody, I guess, thought that we didn't want you all there. None of the councils was there, I don't think. That was open to the public. It was very informative. And it made a difference with our, you know, board, our rule, our layout and all. And I got to give props to Josh. Wow, he was very good. Him and Sarah. And, you know, I didn't know anything. And I was asked to apply for that, you know, to be on the board. And I was chosen. And I really, really learned a lot. And I didn't want, I'd never been into politics and learned anything about all of this. And I learned a lot. And things are not fair in this city, you all. I've been here 46 years. My kids grew up here, and all of them gone because it's nothing here for black and poor people. And you all know it. My neighborhood has been gentrified. I don't even know half the neighbors now. You know, and everybody keep wanting my house. Y'all need to keep this board the way we put it together. Please, please. People come to us and want help. We can't help them. We were just hired to make, you know, the board, you know, the CRB, put it together. Help these people in this town, you all. They are trying to run us away. The old people don't matter, and our children need a chance. We need help. They need help. These people, they come to support us because this what we did was really from the heart. I have grandchildren. We got to think about our future, you all. We can't keep letting this town do what they are doing to the poor and the black people. I'm old. I'm the oldest person on the board. I will fight till I die because I got 10 grandchildren.
Dave?
In a press release, then-acting city manager Mike Murphy said, quote, "Genuine oversight cannot be achieved in any relationship without collaboration, transparency, and integrity by all stakeholders involved," and that the city of Charlottesville and CPD have no fear of scrutiny in the form of a well-thought-out CRB. If that was a true statement, then why did council water down the ordinance and bylaws and stray so far from the initial CRB's proposal? If the police department, quote, "has no fear of scrutiny in a well-thought-out board," then why remove the much necessary auditor position that analyzes data independent of the police department? We need to be unmasking the illusion, including the illusion that police auditing themselves, that's called juking the stats. Why propose a board with no budget, much less than funding it with at least 1% of CPD's budget, which is a national standard? If the city is, quote, "interested in transparency," why did you all carefully skirt public meeting laws when writing your proposal? And why is there no transparency in the way that the board and its director are selected? If the city is interested in, quote, "collaboration," then why gut the initial CRB's proposal without speaking with them or members of the public? This council has asked for respect, but has failed to show it to members of the public, victims of the police, and the initial CRB. The initial CRB fulfilled the mandate that was passed by this council. It delivered the proposal that you asked for to provide true oversight. And you all castrated that proposal. Your proposal will not create accountability nor address CPD's long, vile history. You're opening the door for another Pleasance to use chemical weapons on nonviolent protesters like he did in July 17, and then brag about defying a direct order. You damn right I gassed him. It needed to be done. You're opening the door on more transgender neighbors to go missing without real investigations. A free pass for the police to go on strike again like they did on August 12th or to choke out Sister Ayana. Or for another dispatcher to thank crying Nazi Chris Cantwell for his support and reply, well, that's awesome, when Cantwell said that protesters should be put in a wood chipper. We demand the public hearing to discuss the differences between the comprehensive proposal that you all asked for and was delivered by the initial CRB and the really weak one that you all had proposed last Wednesday and given us no chance to really respond to that just has a veneer of oversight. And I'm also, would like to paraphrase what Nakia Walker asked Mike Signer on August 12th, why do you all think that you can continue to walk in here and do business as usual?
So Andy Orban.
Good evening.
Good evening. Andy Orban, city resident. I have two items I'd like to comment on. One is the CRB guidelines. The other is the middle school reconfiguration. So first, I do want to voice my support as well for the strong CRB and the People's Coalition requests. It's important to have an independent board that can properly represent the community when concerns about policing arise. Second, I'm a parent of a Walker student and a Beaufort student. We really appreciate the teachers and administrators to help our kids have a positive experience. My concern is about the current state of the school buildings and the needed funding for proposed reconfiguration in light of the recent request for a new city hall. The schools must take top priority. There have been years of deferred maintenance on the Walker and Beaufort buildings, and it shows. It sends the wrong message to the kids and staff at the schools. The bathrooms are in bad shape. Last year, one of the participatory budget ideas the sixth grade students presented was bathroom beautification. The indoor air quality is very poor, and there's still no playground for Walker, which is an elementary school. Please make sure the school reconfiguration moves forward, and because it is a lengthy process, also make sure we keep the buildings we have in a functional and safe condition, which means responding promptly to maintenance requests and having funding to fulfill them. I'm addressing this to council and city manager because school facilities, maintenance is done by public works and not by the schools. Other parents have brought up concerns to the attention of the school board, and things have not improved. I ask that you hold off on plans for a new city hall until the school reconfiguration is complete. Thank you.
Kate Fraley. Oh, she, okay.
Hi, Kate Fraley, city resident. I just want to point out five particular areas that the bylaws are missing. There's no auditor. There's no inclusion of data collection, which is necessary to examine policy issues. The CRB should be able to change its bylaws. There needs to be a budget. The majority of the voting members of CRB should be people representing the community experiencing police contact. The section for the selection process for the CRB members and the executive director needs to be transparent and public. That's what I want to talk about the most. So when the CRB wrote the bylaws, they said four people needed to be from historically disadvantaged communities that have traditionally experienced disparate policing. Your version, uh-oh, I lost my thing. Oh, well. Your version says three. The reason the four is really important is because it's a majority of the board. The board is seven people. People who are experiencing disparate policing and have the most contact with the police need to be in the majority. Nobody is going to come and expect a CRB that is not majority people who have suffered from police action. They're just not going to come. One of the reasons I heard that it was shrunk maybe was that there was some fear there wouldn't be enough people. But if you don't have a majority, people aren't going to apply because they'll think it's futile. We've already heard that people think it's futile already on the basis of what's already happened. The other thing is about selection. So in the resolution, sorry. The resolution that you all, three of you, voted for, said that the council seeks to answer the call for a police civilian review board that places emphasis on independence, accountability, and transparency. So the issue of selection of both the executive director and the board members needs to be transparent. So you cut out like a whole page of ways that the CRB suggested it be transparent. You at least need to have all the names of the applicants, their application, and a forum. The purpose of a forum isn't just to, like, bombard the applicants with, and make them nervous. It's to set up a relationship so that the people in the community can say to the applicants, "This is what is important." And the applicants can say to the community, "I agree with those priorities." It's the beginning of a relationship. It's the beginning of community outreach. So you need to do, make it transparent. Thank you.
Walt Haneky.
Hi, Walt Haneky, 1521 Amherst Street. I want to cede my time to Josh Bowers, who's a member, original member of the initial PCRB. Just before I do that, I just want to say that the proposal that you've offered in response to the initial PCRB proposal is an affront to the progress that we have made addressing white supremacy and racial injustice since 2017.
Josh Bowers, city resident, initial member of the civilian review board. First off, I just want to thank the other members of the civilian review board and all of the members of the community who are with us and supporting us and helping educate us throughout the year. People like Harold Foley and Kate Fraley, who came to practically every one of our meetings. And we all, they put a lot of time in, we put a lot of time in. So it's extremely disappointing to see the ways in which the board has been, and the model that we proposed has been neutered. Because quite frankly, if this is what you guys wanted, you didn't need us to work on this for the past year. This could have been done in an afternoon by cutting and pasting the most plain vanilla provisions from the majority of civilian review boards out there. We were trained by NACO to tailor our board proposal to the needs of this community. All of that has been stripped away, and it's really disappointing because you had the chance, and you still have the chance, to build a model board, model police oversight. This isn't it. It really isn't. And the pragmatist in me is fully in favor of the notion of getting something done and, you know, seeing where that leads. But I don't have much in the way of confidence that getting something done here will lead to anything more than the watered-down proposal that you guys are planning to vote upon. Because, you know, in order for me to believe that, in order for other members of the public to believe that this is going to grow into if the need is there, because frankly, the need is already there, the need for an auditor or expanded powers beyond reactive review as the only facet of the board's authority. In order to believe that that's where we're going, there would have had to have been a showing of good faith on the part of the CPD, the Chief of Police, and frankly, you all. And we haven't seen that. You guys said you were entrusting us to build something. We built something thoughtful, legal, and robust. And you've turned around and put before the city something that's anything but. I thank you for your initial trust in us. I wish that trust extended to voting on our proposal, or at most engaging in an ongoing dialogue with us about how to proceed. Thank you.
Rosia Parker.
Ain't going to talk long. Good afternoon. I'm very upset. Even though this has been hard for me mentally and emotionally to help to be able to create this, these bylaws and ordinance, from being a victim here in Charlottesville with the police, not just 2017, being gassed, but years before, generational. I mean, I'm not from here, I'm from DC, so I know it's triple worse there than it is here. But compared to what I've seen here, these 14 years, it's, I mean, y'all, the city have allowed these white officers, these white men, to stand up and take over Charlottesville and do what they want to do. I've watched these police officers hurt our children, slam them, drag them, hogtie drag them. I mean, being treated like animals and not humans. For me to have, as a woman, to have southern officers on me, which was uncalled for, but nothing was done but me taking a charge of either going to jail for 24 months. Because of y'all's legal system, they don't want to help the poor or the black. And it's sad. And y'all have all that we went through from 2017. Y'all have a chance to make something so different that this world is looking for Charlottesville to set a precedent to. So it's like, it's like everything is a joke to y'all because y'all aren't facing this, and what was faced before is still getting worse for the future. Are y'all looking for y'all's children and y'all's children's children? Because I'd be damned if I'm going to stand up here and let y'all water down anything when it comes to leaving a legacy to mine and others. I've watched so much. Everybody keep talking about what was, what was then, what's now. And this Chief of Police that y'all got that everybody's kissing ass to, she's one of the worst police chiefs we's had, we have had here. No, we haven't got on Chief Longo yet, but we are. No, I'm just letting y'all know. Because, you know, I've read what's been out there, but we're on our way to Chief Longo too. It's not a game. We're not playing with nobody no more. Enough is enough. Enough is enough. Like you said, unmask the illusion, the illusion has been double masked. And I'm tired. I've been out here in these streets 14 years, no job, making sure that I'm the face that needs to be, being able to speak for the people that couldn't be spoken for. But tonight, I'm speaking not just for me, I'm speaking for plenty more.
April Bra.
Thank you. I'm going to take a seat. Good evening. Good evening, council, or rather, everyone who has actually made it an effort to be here tonight, unlike our sheriff and unlike our city mayor. I'm sorry, you're here. I'm a little bit flustered. Yeah, city manager, sorry, thank you. Who didn't bother to make this meeting a priority tonight. I stand, I stand or sit rather here before you, not as an educated white woman, you may see at first glance, but as a minority in this community, as a poor disabled veteran. I've had the misfortune to be classified as, by not only our police department, but by all of our city's first responders. I would ask that the CR, or C, PCRB be expanded to not only include our police department, but to include all of our city first responders, because it trickles down, baby. So I find that I have not only had to act as my own advocate in situations where I've called rescue for medical conditions, but for other individuals in my depressed, poor communities that I've lived in throughout my stay here in Charlottesville. Because a poor, disabled veteran, there is no place for you to live affordably in this town. Therefore, you are restricted to only being in the ghettos of Charlottesville, or having so many college roommates that you can't stand to go home. So the biggest deficits I see in the city are victim advocates. To have to call the police department in Charlottesville or for rescue or fire, you will become a victim of our system. Doesn't matter what color your skin is in this city. The, I've had, just recently, one of the last places I lived was over on Mason Street here in Charlottesville in Hogwaller. And I, anytime I saw flashing lights in my community, I had to go be a victim of advocate because I knew what was going on and what was happening to that person who simply was having a bad pain episode or something to that effect. They are automatically classified as drug addicts. They are automatically classified as the scum of this city, honestly, and treated as such. You are more likely to be thrown in jail when you call with a medical issue if you have any amount of PTSD than to actually receive services. I know, I've had that happen to me. I have Lyme disease and extreme PTSD. And unfortunately, this city has done nothing but procreate the PTSD and worsen it because there is no help. There has to absolutely be separate reporting. I'm sorry, but no citizen should have to sit under the thumb of a police officer in order to make a complaint about the police department. That is in itself just asinine. You are then, you put your name in their mouth, and now, if they hear your name, they see your name, they see you on the streets. You are automatically targeted by our police department and by our first responders as well, because they're all friends, let's be serious. The rescue squad, the fire department, the police department, they're all buddy-buddy. They all swap notes and talk about every one of these citizens that they think is scum. So to have them report a, on a police officer in the police department, that person has then been made a victim. They've been forced to further victimize themselves. And to, even if you didn't have PTSD from the first round, they're going to make sure you have it by the end. You're asking for self-serve justice here, and that's what you're going to get. That's what real cities are about, because they don't call the police, because they know what the system has to offer. Instead, they dole out their own justice, and that's how gangs and things like that are developed. So if you choose to not fund the PCRB, I hate to imagine what the ramifications truly in the future will be. Because I can tell you what they will be. There'll be strengthening gang membership, which is on the rise, whether you know it or realize it.
Kurt, could you finish your thought?
I'm trying, I'm sorry.
All your time has been, so I'm trying to let you finish.
I would, like I said, ask that this PCRB not only be fully funded with the advocates that were originally proposed, but be expanded to also include all of our first responders and to have additional funding provided for, sorry, the word's escaping me, for sensitivity training for all of our first responders, not just our police department. Thank you.
I can't read the writing on the first name, but the last name is Scott. Okay, Liz. How are you?
Good evening, city councilors and others. My name is Leslie Harris Scott. I'm a city resident. I've emailed you each a copy to the link of a child welfare study. I did not have our new city manager's email. And this was published in August of last year. From the executive summary, studies throughout the US have repeatedly shown that black children and their families are disproportionately represented in the child welfare system and frequently experience disparate and less favorable outcomes relative to white children and their families. This study assesses Charlottesville's child welfare caseload for evidence of racial disproportionality or representation of racial groups in the child welfare system relative to their presence in the population. in the population and racial disparity, less favorable outcomes for some racial groups compared to others and multiple stages of interaction with the child welfare system. Using administrative, administrative data on children reported to Child Protective Services from July 1st, 2014 to June 30th, 2017, referrals and new clients, post-referral decisions and foster care outcomes by race were examined. Charlottesville DSS was interested in a study to examine and measure racial and other disparities in the child welfare caseload at points along the child welfare continuum. The Public Interest Data Lab collaborated with CDSS to complete a pilot study intended to help CDSS better understand the presence and location of any differential outcomes to enable informed responses to uncover disparities. According to the Virginia DSS website, "Child welfare services in Virginia are family-focused, child-centered, and community-based, with a focus on permanence for all children. Services are intended to protect children, preserve families, and prevent further maltreatment. The summary, data, analysis, and final thoughts of the child welfare study provide the clear message that our system is not working well here in Charlottesville and needs improvement in many areas. Recently, Ms. Kukniel, CDSS director, stated that there will be a required 12 hours of cultural competency training required for staff. This is not enough, there is more that needs to be done. My family continues to have a very challenging experience with Charlottesville Department of Social Services concerning my nephew, who is in foster care. My sister has multiple sclerosis and is unable to keep up with her 12-year-old son, who has some behavioral issues. There was no issue of abuse and neglect. Recently, my nephew was sent all the way to Chesterfield, Virginia, which is a great hardship on my sister, who no longer drives due to her illness. As a family, we made suggestions and given our opinions in an effort to work together in the process to have William come home. The CDSS staff have been, is my time up? Okay. The CDSS staff have been condescending, belittling, unprofessional, and consistently disrespectful to our family. Now, I consider myself a well-informed citizen, and I've worked in the human services field here in Charlottesville. I'm a native for over 28 years. I've been truly appalled at the eye-rolling of social workers and CASA workers, as well as the non-response to emails that I've sent from the director of CDSS when requesting a meeting after our last treatment team meeting. So I'm thinking, if this is happening to my family, then what is happening to other families involved with the system? I've only spoken to a few families, and I know that they are, that I know are connected to foster care and my findings. We have a problem here in Charlottesville with DSS and the way that families are being treated while a part of the foster care system. I'm hoping that you will follow up on the child welfare study I sent you and this issue. I'm willing to meet with you all. I plan to meet with the city manager about this. I plan to meet with the CDSS Advisory Board. And anyone who wants to talk about this, we got a problem. And I am, I went to UVA, I have a master's degree, I have two bachelor's degrees. I have been treated like nothing by the CDSS staff. And I'm very upset, and I plan to help other people who don't have a voice. Thank you.
Just one, I have one quick question.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I didn't, did you all get the email?
Yes.
Uh, Kathy Galvin got it. I just sent it out, so y'all might not have it yet.
Yeah, I typed your name in too.
I think I sent it last night, Kathy.
Yeah.
What I did was I went online and got you all's emails. And they didn't have the new city managers on there. But the child study, the child welfare study is on the Charlottesville website under Social Services, and it says child welfare study, you can search it. And it was August 2018. And I look back at the CDSS Advisory Board minutes, and it was only brought up one time. And it's, it's like, it has a lot of data in it. Yeah, thank you all very much.
And we'll be in touch and make sure that Dr. Richardson communicates.
Yes, yes, I'm definitely gonna talk with him. Thank you.
It's possible for us to potentially, not just in response, this is a complaint that we've heard on several occasions. Maybe it's a good time for us to have a presentation or some kind of formal response from the Department of Social Services, whether that be an upcoming agenda.
They actually, Dr. Boing, they actually have a schedule, I'm on that board, they have a scheduled report to us that's part of their duties. So I think it would make sense to give them this feedback, to make sure that it's top of their list.
Because they haven't, they haven't presented this year, correct?
Well, they do an annual, right? I mean, they prepare an annual on a schedule that's, I think, arranged by the city manager. So yeah, they should, all this should be conveyed to them.
It should be next month. But we still should have a separate.
A separate, yeah, a response specifically.
Yes, I agree.
All right. Michael Payne.
Yeah, be here, it'll be in the city council.
Michael Payne, city resident. I just wanted to speak in support of the bylaws submitted by the initial civilian police review board. And the public comments tonight just reminded me about how, you know, this has been a difficult process to get to this place. There's been conflict. But the issue of policing is a systemic issue, not one of personalities or individuals. And systemic issues require systemic solutions. And I do believe that the draft bylaws submitted by the initial police civilian review board can be part of a structural solution. There are three particular discrepancies that I know myself and others are concerned about. One is the issue of in their bylaws submitted to you, the police review board had more oversight and input over internal policy changes within the police department. That has been changed, there's significantly fewer policies that they have oversight and input on. Again, best practices show that that's important for changing outcomes in policing practice. Secondly, is moving, removing the auditor position that was requested and consolidating it within an auditor position within the police department. I do understand, you know, the reasoning behind that, but I think it's problematic in the sense that police chiefs come and go, the culture of policing changes, individual officers change. And I believe that you're setting up institutional conflict of interest to have auditing happen within the department that itself is being audited. And again, the other component of that is, there, there may be, you know, people who are well-meaning and working on it, but if you don't have the trust of the community, they're not gonna report complaints. And I believe that if it's within the police department, you won't have full trust. And the final piece is just, again, the issue of making sure there's a full budget and full support for the staff positions there. I know that's something that will be worked on going forward, but at the joint work session with Fairfax Police Review Board, they said if you're not willing to fully fund and fully support it, it's not worth doing. And however, you know, the process moves forward. Again, I just want to reiterate to every, everyone that don't underestimate the gap between how much trust there is between the community and local government. And if you don't have an outcome on these bylaws, and you haven't gotten to your finished product with a process that has full buy-in, it will be impossible to function as intended regardless of your intentions on council. But again, I want to thank city staff, city council for the hard work they have put in, and especially thank the initial police civilian review board, which has worked incredibly hard for no pay. Thank you.
Okay, so we have two available slots. Is there anyone who didn't speak that would like to speak?
Sorry, I didn't get a chance to sign up. I was out at the Volunteer Film Festival, Orientation Yay Film Festival for this weekend. But what I want to say is that I certainly do support the bylaws, like Michael Payne said, of unpaid citizen volunteers that looked at a problem and decided they wanted to do something about it and consulted for very little cost some people who have done it, like in Fairfax. I think about, right, and some people have said, well, why since 2017? It's not been since 2017. There are people in this auditorium who have a lived experience beyond what I have ever lived that can talk about why now. It didn't happen then, but it needs to happen now. I also think of Fort Worth, Texas, who, right now, their city council is grappling with a citizen, with a civilian oversight committee after the murder in her own home of Ms. Tatiana Jefferson. Okay? We don't want that to happen here. We've been, I mean, we've had some, we have issues, we have some really bad issues. Thank God we haven't had that issue yet. But to me, it's only a matter of time. And I really think that the Fairfax, Virginia, they've shown the way they've been leading. I know there's some questions about, you know, moneyed, salaried positions. And I think there've been some people here this evening that have certainly spoken to that. But I think that if, if we are going to be the city that is going to pull back the veneer of what a lot of us have lived under, under white supremacy, whether we knew it or not, and white privilege, this is one step in the right direction. And I hope that you will adopt the bylaws that these individuals work so diligently on, so hard on, put their heart and soul in, and that we need that. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Hi, I'm Robin, I live in the, Robin Hoffman. I live in the city of Charlottesville. So I want to say that I come to these hearings a lot because, you know, it really does give me ideas about what's going on in the city. It's, mirrors a lot of what I know from other cities that I've lived in. And then also, I want to highlight, I'm sorry, because it seems like I'm just advertising or something, but we do have a platform, a place to go to for freedom of speech still. And I want everybody to sign on so that we can all talk about what we have issues, weekly, bi-weekly, monthly, whatever you want to do. And it's really inexpensive. I am raising money for scholarship for producers who can't afford to sign on. It's $50 a year if you're gonna do a show. It's 25 just to be a member, supportive member. So on my show, right now, I'm gonna invite guests for $50 if they don't want to be members or produce. And also, I'm selling my paintings in an auction eventually that I'm doing on my show. I'm just putting this out there for people to use Charlottesville Public Access TV or Charlottesville Communication Media Center. You don't have to be on TV. You can also just do a production. I know certain departments in the city are using it to train and things like that. There are people who want to do promotions for themselves. If you want to start a business, or if you're knitting, or if you're cooking, or if you're doing something and you want to sell a product, you can do that on Charlottesville Public Access TV, as long as you don't sell a corporate entity, product, corporation. Then the other thing is Saturday, we're having an open, I mean, orientation. And it's from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00, 3:00 p.m. this Saturday. And it will be held at York Place, which is on the downtown mall, right next to Christians. You can also walk into York Place, the media center, and 9:00 to 5:00, and just sign up. And David Dillon will give you instructions on how to use the facility and help you. So, I mean, all of that is inclusive. And please take into consideration that you will have a voice. And people will acknowledge that, you know, it's a really good thing to have freedom of speech and that it will be popular, hopefully, like Netflix. And people can't wait to, to, to be there and to speak and to hear each other. Okay, thank you.
I just have a couple comments, do you all have any comments?
I'll save mine for the.
For later, okay. And I just wanted to say, in case individuals had to leave or, you know, wouldn't be here, we have two items before that should go pretty quickly. They shouldn't take long, two public hearings. And then the item following that will be our discussion on the civilian review board and the proposals. And I just wanted to address just the transparency. We have not had a meeting together. So every meeting that we have had together, the last one about this was the work session. It was recorded and the public was there. So we had individuals or two council members to staff meetings about the civilian review board. So this will be the first time that we will all be together discussing this. So I just wanted to, there were some concerns about whether we had gotten together and all decided on this and that wasn't, that wasn't the case. We were not in the room together with this. I, as you all know, had two, I think, a Facebook Live Thursday, and then another one yesterday with the main concern around the auditor position. So I have expressed those concerns, had several conversations today, attempted to have several more around some thoughts around it. And the only other thing that I wanted to address that may not come up, I just wanted to make sure I didn't forget, was the internal policy review and the changes that was there. I did email Sarah, who was on the initial review board, about policies, because there are a lot of police department policies, anywhere from which kind of shoes you need to wear to pants. And so my question was, what policies did you want to make sure were included here instead of just like this broad review? So if during the next two public hearings and the, you know, break, if there are comments related to that, I just wanted to give people time to kind of think about that, because we did have an email exchange about that. And I didn't receive a list to be able to, to present. I'm not saying that it will be voted on, I'm just letting you all know that if there is a list of policies that you all definitely want to include it, then I did ask the question, and I didn't receive one to process with the city attorney and the other councilors. All right, that's all that I had for now. Okay, so we're gonna take a break.
Is there a list of the policies that are already planned to be reviewed?
What do you mean?
So you said there were police policies that were going to be reviewed in the next two meetings, correct?
No.
No.
That's not what I said.
That's not what you said. See, that's why we like writing too.
All right, so we'll take a 15-minute?
10, please.
15.
Be here all night. Got shit to do.